The United States of America and its republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, glory and justice for all.
Councilon Spencer.
President.
Councilon Levinson.
President.
Councilon Thompson.
President.
Councilon Taylor.
President.
Councilon Taffet.
President.
Councilon Masso.
President.
And President Sam.
President.
That's all seven here.
To the approval of minutes, Councilon Spencer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand to ask for your acceptance of this speaking in minutes being twenty seconds, two thousand nine.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Is the public hearing? Do you agree with that?
City council will now hold a public hearing to oppose community development block hiring, home investment partnership, and emergency services grants program. This year forty-five budget in annual action. Opposed FY forty-five budget as opposed to six months' time. Calendar under its basis.
Hello, gentlemen. If you really want to come down and talk about the CDT budget, please come forward. You have five minutes. Please write your name and state your address.
Didn't tell me to be respectful.
Be respectful.
You didn't know that before?
Did you use your respectful?
Well, my name is John Solak. I inform you of the court decision in Los Angeles. You don't have to be respectful. You can use the F-word, the N-word, express yourself any way you want. And the Los Angeles City Council found out that the hard way, but I must say that ever since that court decision, people are addressing themselves. The public officials are listening. It's fun, it's amusing, and it's going much smoother than it was when they tried to side open the first issue. Uh, Vines, Vines, sounds like a good organization. Somebody told me that that was taken out and then put back in. Uh, I don't know why that is. Uh, it's a high overhead organization. You know, it's not a business. I can say I'm starting on, uh, certain children. If I gave eighty percent of the money salary, I'm not helping a lot of children. And this is a problem, not a promise. Now, I, in fact, ask you, uh, the way they run, ask you for my email, because earlier when we had that court and talked about, I may have provided something to you that, I don't know, but when we talked about how it tends to be over. And these were nonprofit. My hand is off and it knocked out on the nurse, because everything is sad, it's people in business. Now, this woman got a degree in social work, yes, which is paying her something like sixty, seventy thousand dollars a year. Now, I will be so, it is that, it's a work of the day, this town, no, of course not. Uh, now, and here's the other thing. You're leasing property to them, you're already giving them property for adult. Now, what do they do with that property? They subdivide and they put twenty-five thousand percent on the garden plots. You're getting a buck, they're getting the twenty-five thousand percent. Now, how is that right? Uh, I don't know how many hours the corporate council has to, in these leases, but I can get at least one plus a thousand bucks. Five hundred if I get some flow, but not get anything like decent, uh, for a ten-year lease to do any work. Now, they're charging me some thousand bucks, at least two or three hours. So, you're not even recovering your cost, so you've already contributed to Vines. Now, the county runs their garden plot correctly. You've hired a youth director who essentially follows the mayor around unless you're ninety, thirty-five million a term, takes pictures of him. If she's the youth director and you've got a couple of works to the garden, why not have you in the community garden, uh, that just had no overhead? Because what do the kids get? They get a t-shirt, a beaned garden, and a jowl sandwich. And that's all. So, I'm tired of all these programs, uh, that are ripping the taxpayers and ripping the Vines off. And I think you better go and check Vines out, somebody better table that thing, because it's absolutely outlandish. That three people would grab all that money. And, you know, it's like, it's not like they've been in business that long either. You know, this thing went from a few string operation to a huge, uh, operation in a very short period of time. And, uh, look, if you go over the next spot, every tree that you plant could be a fruit tree. And it results in so many apples and oranges and pears falling into the sidewalk. People want to have their fruit. But you don't want to do that. You want to plant ornamental trees that have absolutely no food value, they're worthless, and they, uh, they, they blow the wind, and it's a joke. So, let's spend this money wise. Let's spend this money like it was coming out of your chat. And there is no way that you would enrich an organization that has good law, absolute law, to, to have that kind of blood of sadness. It's ridiculous. What happened to volunteers by the, oh, I get it, I get it. Volunteers for other people. The executives in the sound of Ron and Tom, they gotta have full salary. They don't ever volunteer for nothing. So, I leave you with this. Cut the crap. It's a political movement. It starts right now. Join us.
Anybody else who's interested in speaking on the CDT budget? Close the public hearing, I think? Not a public comment? You have five minutes. Please go down and state your name and your address, please. Be respectful.
Never can get too much of a good thing. Uh, not so like I live in the city, unfortunately. Uh, city's in very, very bad shape. Uh, no explanation on sewer plants. If you vote to privatize the sewer plant, you will be out of politics for the rest of your life. You won't be able to spend it. Uh, how are people on this income? How are these nonprofit land? What are they gonna do? What, I mean, you're in, you're in housing for, uh, apparently your income twenty-five percent, eight fifty lots, that's how many drivers. How are, how are you gonna afford to shore the water? Uh, the rate structure is gonna be default, like, uh, people that are unelected. I think we've had enough of that, our debt's getting controlled by people that we can't boot out. So, this is very sad. Now, there's a business competition, the LDC, the mayor's head of the LDC, five thousand dollars, and who won it? The produce supplier for the mayor's restaurant. Now, you want to talk about, you're in a parents' pod, and he said on the radio, I think yesterday, today, he said, oh, I didn't know that. Well, if he watched Channel Thirty-four or LA News on Station, he would know that. They supply the produce for produce. I mean, this is, well, he did vote out, he said in the LDC. So, I would suggest that, right, if you're doing that case, go to lunch, you know, if you want to, you know, get your head supply to lunch, uh, for a year. Get your tomatoes over at, I don't know, whatever, go ahead, it's less than this town. Uh, mobility devices, we've already talked about it, mobility devices on streets, personal mobility devices, out on sidewalks on the street. Been talking about this for probably fifteen years. Somebody got hit. You know, that, that, that court person that got hit on the street, you know? We know that, I didn't say anything about the truck going on the sidewalk. The weapon must have been on, on the street. You know, we, we have a weird town here. We got people that are riding bicycles on sidewalks, and the mobility devices are in the street. I warned you that somebody would get hit, you know, and you've been duly warned, you can go to get, get some minutes of meeting, and, uh, I don't know, I don't know, what do we do? What do we do on that? On this project, I figure our front's an absolute waste. It's gonna be, I'm gonna go into the ring business, because that curb cut, it's gonna be a lot of expensive, uh, wire wheels, alloy wheels, whatever they call it, gonna be all, then, you know, I'll open it up in my garage, and I'll, I'll make quite a fortune. Look, I want a fair city council. I want the city council to cut the crap. I want you to stop overseeing everything that the mayor is doing, because the mayor's out. He's out, he's stuck us already with three hundred out, three hundred million out, maybe more, maybe a little over three fifty. Four, who knows? But he didn't want Roger Plumber. Roger Plumber, because you're only help of great rainy investment, and you still have to, it's, it's gonna work. So, uh, what are we gonna do about this city? Are we just going to go on? Are we not doing some control? Are we going to do, what, improvement? You've got little time left. You're gonna make it your mark. It's so hard. It hasn't been, it hasn't been great. On the first board, on the first hearing, the first board, I asked you, how's it going? You know why I didn't like that project? Because we weren't gonna do the whole thing. Now, look at those houses, everything. They look worse than that. I mean, the, the people, the poor people that own those houses, that are renting those houses, they stick out like a sore thumb. But all the assembly project will still get it. That was my concern. If you don't do it, the whole thing, that's what's gonna happen. So, what's the plan?
No idea.
Because now, the houses that aren't done, stick out more than ever. Stick out more than ever. So, uh, look, it's a town of, uh, forty-five thousand people. It's in a decline, it's always been, it's gonna get wack in the census. Uh, and, uh, what do you want from me? What's your idea? You've got, you haven't done anything with the time or contract. They should be here, I'm gonna get a contract. You should have, have everybody do a picture. You've got Dan Thomas here and here. Why don't you do some, I mean, where at least you can walk a lot of the bars, they have a contract, or a spectrum. Why don't you stand up to the spectrum? You've got a contract. Why don't you pull their contract and say, hey, what's going on? You don't want to do it. You don't want to do it. But let me tell you something. I've been having the mayor for four years. Had the mayor for six months in a city where he had, in a radically different course, a radically good one, where people aren't getting ripped off, thank you. You're the most powerful.
Hi.
Can you give your name and address and sign for me, please?
Uh, four minutes, ten point five rounds row, out of the transactional line. Um, a couple months ago, Councilon Levinson and Councilon Taylor took a tour of our plant. Um, I just wanted to step up and ask everyone else here on the council to come take a tour, see what we've done, ask what's going on over there, give them opportunity to answer any questions they might have, and also to the mayor, if he wants to come down and see what's going on over there. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who's interested in speaking, please come forward.
This is a machine.
Please state your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Moktor Shalai. I'm resident of the city. Anything more than that?
No.
Okay. Um, so, I, uh, my first time addressing this body. I know many of the folks that I'm talking to here, and I'd like to ask if it's possible to, uh, do a better job of explaining to the public, uh, why there needs to be the privatization of the Joyce Street Plant. What exactly is the problem, and why is this prescribed correctly? Uh, there are a lot of people that are concerned about potential cost increases, uh, whether something is done or whether something is not done. Uh, there are also a lot of people that are very concerned about employees, uh, union or not, that work at Joyce Street Plant. Certainly, a lot of folks here have a lot of expertise, uh, they've worked there for years. Um, I have people who are in my family, so to speak, that have spent many years, uh, coming home, uh, from, uh, the Joyce Street Plant, which we firmly buy, and know it's not the most pleasant place in terms of the enrollment, but they put up with it, and they do their job. And, um, I've had a loss. Maybe I have incorrect articles, or, or maybe information just isn't getting out there, but I'm at a loss with what exactly is the problem that this endeavor seeks to resolve? And why employees who work very hard for many years, uh, and, uh, you know, given of their time and their expertise to this, this, uh, municipality, this, this, municipally owned entity, uh, why they should be in fear of their, uh, employment, you know, going away? So, it's something that I'm concerned about in terms of what the potential cost could be of doing this. Um, you know, there are rumors that, you know, bills are going to go up three hundred percent. You know, if this is a good solution, if this is the right thing to do, then I think that this body and the mayor's office, uh, could do a better job of explaining to the public why that is. Um, you know, everyone wants to protect rate payers, everyone wants the construction at the Joyce Street Plant to, uh, to be completed on time and on budget, but I'm a lady, and the things I hear are that, um, the folks that are going there every day, doing the job of my folks, are not the issue. And that this is more a management problem. Um, but there's a lot of confusion right now. And I have made a decision, one way or another, I'm not, uh, trying to cast blame on any one, uh, particular party, or, you know, say that, uh, you know, this is a good idea or bad idea, but it isn't clear to me, maybe at some point, this body and the mayor's office can help, you know, average citizens like myself understand what's at stake, why this is so important, because honestly, there are a lot of people that have, uh, become very concerned about this. Uh, not just the employees, but people that, uh, you know, paid the, uh, you know, paid the, paid bills, uh, to the Joyce Street Plant. We're all very concerned. And why, with, with this many, uh, folks thinking about this problem, uh, why should we not know what's going on? Why should there be so much confusion? Why isn't it that we don't have a process that, um, has a timeline, where it's clearly explained, this is what the issue is, this is the proposed ready, um, and you get all the stakeholders, uh, on board? Uh, like I said, there are a lot of you that I know personally. This is not the past versions of your judgment. This is a request for more information and clearer explanation of what's going on at Joyce Street Plant. Thank you.
Anyone else who's interested in come forward and speak?
Good evening. Our deals are city hearings, and our crew might have. Uh, so because of, of Councilon and Levinson's efforts to make city meetings more accessible to taxpayers and citizens, I was able to see the video probably about the final deal, in which I commend John Masso for starting the conversation, and then there's agreement, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, all seven of you, to invite Josh Snyder down so he can finally have a conversation about questionable practices on Mayor David's property for, uh, Fourth Street, in which his property was reduced informally by the assessor by thirty, I think, a hundred thirty percent shortly after he elected. Right? That was real big. I saw that. You were gonna invite him down. And then the assessor said, no. In my eight years in City Hall, we never had a single department head reject an offer from the city council, because we made it very clear that everyone was to respect the legislative body and work with it. We didn't have to disagree with them. You didn't, you can ground for that, right? But it was to respect it. The assessor basically said no. So, council president, what are you gonna do? You're just gonna accept that? You had unanimous decision by this body to say, please come down and answer some questions. And if you think this is just one person's political rattle, you're absolutely wrong. I'm sure you've all heard this in your community. So, it is incumbent upon the council president to hold this administration accountable, and to hold any department head who's invited by this, have to unanimously do it again. And I hope you do so. Secondly, regarding the CDT budget, I'm starting with public comments. I just wanted to say, repeat, I, I want to commend some changes to the mayor making this final budget. I'm pleased to see that the initial budget, which included funds for surveillance cameras, uh, that had been eliminated, and it's saved fifty thousand dollars for expanding hours of the Boys and Girls Club that had, that is a great move. Um, maybe six years around it, and actually, that doesn't count much sense. Um, but I would still encourage you all to remove the funds for the staff in the economic development office. The staff spend probably about ten percent of their time on CDT eligible activities. Um, but yet, you're funding the majority of their budget, I think fifty or sixty percent. And just again, this is what you're getting. For two years, you gave the economic development office staff, and I have respect for that. I like Bob Murphy, he's a champion for many good things in this community. Um, they gave three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in basically anti-private grant fund. And the result was eight loans that they issued over two years. Five of those loans were less than five thousand dollars, five thousand dollars and less. So, basically, you're paying the staff a forty thousand dollar fee for issuing loans of five thousand dollars. That's what you're doing. Meanwhile, I know that there's more, more community groups that can use additional funds for opioid addiction, for youth programming, for dealing with, uh, vulnerable residents, dealing with addiction. Um, we can make our investments, we can continue the awesome pre-planting that's done on Eastside, outer neighborhoods. Uh, there's a lot of activities that you can use these funds on, and I just don't think you can get the return on investments. And finally, continue to, uh, champion what has been said. Um, you know, folks aren't, maybe they don't want to be as blood as I am, but, you know, this whole scheme, the Joyce Street Plant, again, is motivated by Mayor David's, uh, desire to not be connected at all with the impending significant hikes in sewer rates. That's it. He just wants to protect his political record, and he's throwing labor on the bus. But we should expect Dr. Less, how many fires now are initiating at the plant every month? Is this a construction company that follows home management schedule? A construction company that was picked instead of a project labor agreement with local labor? And you're throwing these different folks on the bus. You know why they want to prioritize it? Protect his record and cut their pensions, cut their benefits. It's a disgrace, and I hope all of you, over the next few months, come to reason and stand up and work for the Joyce Street Plant. Thank you.
Anyone else who's interested in speaking, please come forward?
See you, guys. Hello, my name is Michael Pass. Pass is here to, uh, for the level. And I am president of the City of Pinkerton. I've spoken here before several times. I just want to make sure that I give everyone else a chance to come down and speak before I address this body. First, I would like to say I would like to commend many of the members of the union, uh, which two or three I saw last meeting are here again today. And it's nice to see them continue to be involved in the process, uh, and I hope that this is all settled and continue to come down, because usually, no one else here decides themselves. Maybe to re-geone most of the ones, because being involved is, you know, a change, and I hope the media that's here as well, a lot of them, get involved and get some, if you've seen some video, maybe noticed it. Uh, taking a select video there. And that's important because, I bring that up because you don't want this to be about, as far as, I spoke about that last time, speaking about that again for a moment. We want to make sure that we're not making exaggerations or accusations that are founded on very difficult subjects that have been going off for many years. And we need to get it, and with full scope, uh, everything that's involved with it. We want to make sure we give them the right answer. And antagonizing people and getting political points for it doesn't help. And I'm happy to say that most people who spoke today have a lot. But the main point why I want to speak today is actually to accept that that has nothing to do with. Um, and some of us may have noticed that it was announced that there is a cyber cafe in Pinkerton on the west side, in the third district, that's closed after twenty-two years. And this is a subject that talked to a lot of people about private channels publicly. It's indicative of a problem in our county. We are, right, we have saturation. We're a business that we opened, we have another that closes within six months. There are businesses that tend to last from eighteen to twenty-four months, sometimes thirty-six months in your cycle. We're not the same businesses. The businesses that we tend to add, have, have sustained power, have been establishments of food, alcohol, and housing. In particular, we're talking about hotels. That's not self-sufficient. Now, this is not necessarily a problem just in Pinkerton. This is something that's immediately looking upstate New York. That's indicative of all of our state under policies we've ever formed. We've seen our corporate taxes go up consistently. We've seen regulations strain our businesses. But on our local level, we must be very, very grateful for new opportunities, because we are missing them. We continue to see a business open at the cost of another, older business closing or missing one. We have to get some courage for those businesses who struggle through the hard times and continue to do so to be able to move forward. I believe this is an August body, and I have no doubt, speaking with all of you, that you all have the capability to have, I know we have the ability to do this. I've heard, I've discussed with many others, may not have that opportunity, or not taken the chance to speak with you to learn that. But I hope that working together, rather than working critically, to provide ourselves for this election or that election, or just more political points on some future election, let's go that side. We have a very common ambition. We are not growing this community. We are losing population of one of all of the city in New York. And we need to stop this, we need to stand this. I know we can, and hopefully, we will all join the unions, politicians, pundits, everyone, for that bill, and I look forward to seeing that happen, and of course, I will help, just like that. I thank you for your time.
Okay. Anyone else who's interested in come forward and speak on the council? See you, number one, and the number two, ready? If you have the right time, this is your opportunity to find yourself a next. If you have the right time, this is your official, by this, ultimate question.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for a general approval, if you could agree for orders to make in the year sixty? Second. This is the order to make in twenty-nine, please, in priority for our budget, transfer funds for fire and hand salary, and road services for IT support, and work down for IT support.
What's your comments?
All questions, please.
What's your call, both, please?
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilman Crum?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Hefster?
Aye.
Councilman Montal?
Aye.
President's here.
Aye.
Seven I zero A's.
Your order is one ninety-six, one, sir, by this, Councilman Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for the end, uh, two of orders, uh, ninety-sixty-one.
Second.
This is an order to make in twenty-nine, eighteen, your own budget, just be inspired by your project, all the time.
What's your comments?
Councilman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to take a transparency, we talked to the fire chief about this. This overtime is mainly because we have a number of firefighters currently that are long-term sick leave, they are overseas, in the military, just an unfortunate amount of firefighters that are stat condition for a variety of reasons. So we've had more folks that have to work overtime and we are out. We're getting on that budget line a lot earlier than we expected, and I think that we're on the cusp of, uh...
Any questions, your comments?
All questions.
What's your call, both, please?
Councilman Scourge?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilman Crum?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Hefster?
Aye.
Councilman Montal?
Aye.
President's here.
Aye.
Seven I zero A's.
Your order is one ninety-six, two, sir, by this, Councilman Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for your unanimous consideration, uh, for this, uh, zero-nine, zero-one-nine, that's sixty-two.
Second.
This is an order to amend the twenty-nine, eighteen, Binghamton, Johnson City, Johnson Street Facility project for additional appropriations to gas and...
What's your comments?
All questions.
What's your call? What's your call, please?
Councilman Scourge?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilman Crum?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Hefster?
Aye.
Councilman Montal?
Aye.
President's here.
Aye.
Seven I zero A's.
Your vote, your resolution, one ninety-four-five, sir, by this, Councilman Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for your unanimous consideration for consideration of if you agree with the resolution that you require.
Second.
This is a resolution authorizing Mayor into an agreement, uh, compromised for work conversations for two years.
What's your comments?
All questions.
What's your call? What's your call, please?
Councilman Scourge?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilman Crum?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Hefster?
Aye.
Councilman Montal?
Aye.
President's here.
Aye.
Seven I zero A's.
Your vote, your resolution, one ninety-four-seven, sir, by this, Councilman Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for your unanimous consideration for interruption of resolution number R-one-nine, that's six. Resolution authorizing Mayor into a right-of-way agreement with mobility to LLC for telecommunications services, just to scan operations or cellular communication infrastructure and right-of-way cooperation.
What's your comments?
All questions.
What's your call? What's your call, please?
Councilman Scourge?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilman Crum?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Hefster?
Aye.
Councilman Montal?
Aye.
President's here.
Aye.
Seven I zero A's.
Your vote, your resolution, one ninety-four-seven, sir, by this, Councilman Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask for your unanimous consideration for interruption of resolution number R-one-nine, that's four-seven.
Second.
Resolution authorizing Mayor to enter into an agreement with Grove County to establish reimbursement for Debra District projects in Grove County Forum Theater, and allow to see two hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty, no, not, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars of City of Binghamton and Grove County to have a memorandum of standing between each other for seven hours, of reporting that they know too far, and if they can't take those lots of money.
What's your comments?
All questions.
What's your call? What's your call, please?
Councilman Scourge?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilman Crum?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Patrick?
Aye.
Councilman Montal?
Aye.
President's here.
Aye.
Seven I zero A's.
Your vote, your resolution, one ninety-four, sir, by this, Councilman Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'd like to ask for your unanimous consideration for resolution nineteen forty-eight.
Second.
Resolution authorizing First Assembly of God to conduct fireworks this year in July third, twenty nineteen, and nine thirty P M. And it was quite a successful last year for them. It was their first year doing it, and it did very well, and it was a very successful last, so I don't think it's a bad thing.
What's your comments?
All questions.
What's your call?
Councilman Scourge?
Aye.
Councilman Livingston?
Aye.
Councilman Crum?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Hefster?
Aye.
Councilman Montal?
Aye.
President's here. Seven I zero A's.
How did communications with council members start with Councilman Livingston?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I've got a couple of things. Tomorrow morning, we'll start in tomorrow morning at nine A M until three P M at the University Downtown Center will be the Greater Binghamton Tiny Homes Summit. I'm pretty excited about this. Reverend Faith Fowler will be the keynote speaker. She's both pastor of Cass Community United Methodist Church and the executive director of Cass Community Social Services, a nonprofit agency that provides food, housing, medical, mental health, and employment programs for people living in areas of concentrated poverty. She's a prominent leader at the forefront of the tiny homes movement. She's been in Detroit for the past thirty years, and she recently sold a historic home that she's been living in for years to live in one of the tiny homes that she helped build among the tiny home communities in Detroit. Yeah, and, you know, the people involved in this project are just amazing. The city's been involved since, since Jump Street, and it looks like they're gonna be set up to build, you know, tiny home community in Binghamton. There's, there're gonna be a bunch of other great speakers, including, I mean, I have no access, but the tiny home builder that they're bringing in, he's been on, I guess it was like a tiny home TV show or something, and this guy's, he's been at the forefront of kind of championing tiny home construction. And basically, the idea behind this organization is to provide people with a pathway of poverty through, you know, learning, learning skills in the trades and also building equity in a home that is, you know, scaled to their needs, you know, that they could eventually, after a few years of living there, they could eventually scale into another home, you know, like a, maybe, maybe I don't want to be derogatory, it's a tiny, but a normal-sized home in the community. So this is pretty exciting stuff. Also, this Saturday from eleven A M to ten P M at the Bundy Museum of Historic, of Art and History and Art, will be the second annual Art Binghamton Music Festival. The festival will showcase two live stages, food vendors, three breweries, and a distiller. I looked at the lineup, and just a lot of good local bands that are gonna be playing there, a lot of good local food, and it's, the admission is free, obviously the food and the drink are not, but, you know, if you wanna go, check it out, it doesn't cost you a dime. Also, on Saturday from ten thirty A M to nine, or three, three thirty P M will be the All Nations Celebration Parade. The parade starts here at City Hall and goes to American Civic Association. After the parade, there's, there's a lot of ethnic food at the American Civic Association. The food is just amazing, if you've never been, it's totally worth it, there also be, you know, there's gonna be entertainment and some other vendors at the, at the event. Now, there's a couple of other things I just wanted to mention. One of them is the parking ramp. So we're now a month into having asked Pike, or having started a process of trying to get the development, Pike Development, to come here and talk to us. And really, I haven't heard anything back from them, and I think that silence speaks volumes, and it's a little problematic. And then the last thing, you know, just to echo some of what folks said tonight during the public comments, but also to sort of highlight some of the stuff that was said in Monday's work session. Several of my colleagues here and also some city hall staff tempted to characterize this RFP as sort of a, you know, we're exploring the options that are laid out before us. And I think that if that were the case, you know, we would have commissioned a study like we did with the Fire Department consolidation. We would have commissioned a study and taken a look at that, but what we did was we spent around a hundred and forty thousand dollars to develop an RFP. That's an awful lot of money to put into a process that doesn't have a built-in conclusion. Now, you know, maybe, maybe some folks here can suspend their disbelief that this is really just an exploration of what options are really out before us, but I think that this plan is on a fast track, and it's really fiscally irresponsible. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. What's your comments?
Thank you. It's the A C A, it's a major district that will go to the elevation celebration, um, and how that continues to be partnerships and help sponsor the event. Um, it's about ten thirty for the flag raising outside where we always raise the flag, and then we walked over to the A C A, the flag is down there, free. There's a whole bunch of stuff going on there, so we were really cool, and going, how we can bring our family and live there and have a good day. Our flag launch is in Paul Stadium on June tenth at seven P M. It's going really well, we have a lot of people who are trying to figure out when we can defer the money over, because we know that if we can keep our roof busy, then we can keep it without trouble. And that's where we need to start directing our attention, is in convention, before we get into trouble. June one, yeah, right here at, uh, between City Council Chambers, we'll be meeting the House of Sonic Temple in a public forum, everyone's on the, up to attend. They are restoring the Sonic Temple, this is something that I've been working on personally even before I was in City Council. And we're glad to see it opening up again, it'll be a few years, but we have a few years as a community to decide what other things we want to see in there, so if that, we can pick something up online as well. And we can come to the owners and have to be here to have a presentation about what the Sonic Temple was prior before, I was brought from my team, so it has a good, good history there. I just wanted to speak to our, our workers here. I'm teaching at the Los Angeles Tree, worked for years actually, stopped working there, but I'm a part of the A F L C, I will, I'm in a, that I want to run that. And also, you know, so, all I have to say is, there's been a lot of questions, and I'm sorry, City Council, there's a lot of these questions. We have it at the same time we did because we didn't know, really. We put out an R F Q to see if we needed, now, this is for management, it's not for owners, and if they, and, oh, they missed their, of course, I'm not saying, we were looking for an option, to see what's going on with management. And as far as I know, they had, um, meeting in January, I was in the tent, I had to look for my son, who was four hours away, and so I paid, I was out here. The other customer was worse, so if you have questions, you might be able to ask them, because I really don't have answers, I don't really have any. But after that, they decided, they, they, not only the R F Q, and they said that having management might save them, I did not know about the R F P until you guys were talking about the R F P, none of us shared. We just wanted to know, and I don't remember how that came out, and I think it shouldn't have been handled differently if we were in charge, but I think we did handle it a lot differently. I just wanted to know if it comes between our employees, I thought we had to speak constantly, you know, that I have to know.
Thank you, Councilman. How about Councilman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, everyone that came to speak tonight. I have spoken a lot already about the problem construction, about the plan, as, as you know, Councilman Loyster and I did a tour last week, two weeks ago now. Talked a lot about the issues with privatization. One thing that I don't think that I nailed down enough, though, with the, the problem with this R F P, because I respect the notion that, you know, maybe we need to see until, you know, the, the results come back, understand information and work and everything, I, I can appreciate that's definite. But the whole issue with this process, aside from the fact that most of us, including the employees working there, if I have that paper, is that there is no way that we can do an R F P for the privatization of private management or operation of this municipal plant, a newly reconstructed or refurbished plant, when we don't know how much it even costs to run it even. We have not operated this newly reconstructed refurbished plant yet. We are training our employees that have weathered floods and reconstruction, so much to, to do it, right? And now, we're gonna rush through proposals that could only, we can only assume are being overflated with their numbers, or overestimated, or whatever it is. I mean, it's, it's a dangerous proposition when we don't even know how much it costs to run this thing, and we're gonna ask the private manager to do it for us, who's, who has the bottom line of their own, for the record. So it's just, it's, it's, it's something that I think we're, we're deeply mishandled, and we should look at it. Thank you, everyone that is coming, meeting after meeting, to hold us accountable. We are not talking about this. We're, we're talking about this in a different way than we have before, because you're here. So thank you. And that's all I'll say on that. Last week, uh, is Summer in Binghamton. Summer in Binghamton is the best time to be in Binghamton, there's so much going on. Councilman Crum, Councilman Livingston spoke about things like All Nations Celebration, Art of Binghamton Music Festival, we also talked about the Lion and Topps Tour this Saturday, Pride of Muzza is happening this Saturday, two to eight, one of the best celebrations of L G B T pride, Public State New York. There's gonna be tons of stuff to do this year, the weather's gonna be great, it's just one of those times where you're so proud, it's a little in Binghamton, especially in Little Downs Town, Binghamton, if you're resident of the fourth district. Make sure to get out this weekend, there's so much to do, so much to be proud about, and I hope that you all enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. How about Councilman Patrick?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to comment on this, because, as well, uh, the place is closing down, the Cyber Cafe has been there for twenty-two years. Uh, it's been a great place for a lot of people, I'm sorry, here that they're closing. But, in, in, when things are going well, a lot of different businesses will open up, and, uh, a lot of those businesses tend to, people all around, moving here, I think that's where, uh, everyone has a passion for that, you know, some, some guys might, make a great name for in their barbecue, and they're trying to say, man, this is the best word I've ever, you really should come to us. And a lot of times, they're also to open up their business because they enjoy you, and they get to be, they have a, uh, they want to please people, and the way you do this is really true, you know, that you want the people to come and see you, a lot of times, say, hey, I've got, I've got a great lunch, and some, uh, great beverages, and then we get a lot of people. So, my point is that a lot, a lot of places open up, and in a century of success, uh, it's not high for these types of establishments. So you may see, uh, more closures, which is unfortunate, because... So you may see more closures, which is unfortunate, because it not only requires a lot of time, money, but you're, you're, you put yourself into that. It's like, it's one of those things that it's the inherent dream, you finally achieve something that you're doing yourself, you're the boss, and you want, you want a successful life. So you put a lot of yourself into that. And if it doesn't succeed, it takes a lot out of you, you know. You know, I've run it out of the very first, for a long time. But it's seven days a week, and it's, it's American. So, but I do want to encourage anyone who wants to open a business, becomes successful at, there's probably nothing in the world for a sad time. So I would encourage anyone that has a dream, an idea, to wait until the right time, the dream, and have enough money to last the time that it takes to get established. Because one of the main drawbacks of places to do the loads is that they under cap the figure. So, and there's organizations now, like S C O R, which is business girls, that help young businesses get started. Or if you are a business and you're, and you're starting a little bit, it would be very helpful to give you a right track. So, I wish everyone a good evening.
Senator Chelson? Senator Montal?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to go with you off the subject. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. It's nice to see people in the audience, really. At one time, we were down to city council, if they would like to see maybe businesses start to call. I have one in my neighborhood, and the neighbors all see it. And this is what you get, piles of garbage. Never let me make it. I set things up, I called, I spoke to the building before, I don't see anything getting done there. Now, I understand across the street, next door to my house. And guess what's next door to my house? The same thing, piles of garbage. It's every table. And I set these to go to every table. It's not the first time. I don't see anybody doing anything to clean it, it's really getting, you're taking it to me. But don't ever bring, I'm down to city council, again, when I'm here, don't worry, this is every house, I will do it. Thank you.
Thank you. As Councilman Montal said, I appreciate everybody coming down, the people that spoke, the people in the audience, I appreciate you guys coming down. Realize one thing, this is easy to get along. My eyes are wide open and my mind is not yet up with anything regarding this city plan. So it's a process, we're going to go through it, and no, we can see no one went a minute twice. So realize that, and I'll take the motion to the governor.
Not yet.
Not yet.
I will, I will.
Senator Chelson? You're like, I just thought you were going to say.
Yeah. I'm going to ask.
Yeah. Almost got away with it.
Again, yeah. Is this where I say, thank you, Mr. President?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, I'm looking at it, yeah. Thank you for all the speakers again who came down tonight. Thank you to all our city workers and everything they do for us. I do want to echo the sentiment of some of my colleagues here. Very lucky to have a good friend, I think actually, a person, a resident, Matt Card, a number of years ago. He started and called Heart Binghamton. And it actually had a very unique focus in its overall conception, which was to actually focus on local artists who are inspired by local things in the local cities and celebrate them. And it's ballooned over the last five years. The number of sponsors, it's a true day event now. I've actually been to it every year since it's happened, and it's just been absolutely phenomenal. Over down at Bundy, Friday, Saturday, June seventh, fifteen A M. Going to be a lot of live music, local bands, food, drinks, a lot of things going on. So remember that our local artists are small local businesses. I think we often sometimes tend to forget that. So it's important that you come down and support them as well. Hang something really nice in your home or your work office that has been made by some local. So again, at the Bundy, Friday evening and only Saturday, want to get a good shout out to Matt Card, Sean Cole, and everybody in the first district, all the levels here who are involved, and should be a great weekend. First one we're going to watch will be Thursday, the twenty, six P M over at St. Michael's. And I actually just want to thank again, and remember, it's everyone who lost their lives in terms for our country, with the memorial in the past. And thank you for everyone, all the question we came out, and had a great time at the, in the, in the.
Senator Chelson?
So, second.